Very small period.
No, not entirely.
My own, my wall.
How many phones do you have?
One's for work, one's for me.
Got the lobbyist phone.
Yeah, I got our lobbyists ringing up my phone 24/7, wanting to access.
That just has texting and all that.
Wait a second, I can grant some access to all the lawmakers. I'm going to call to me in order, please show me to recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, welcome to our August Board of Supervisors meeting. Kim, please note that two of the three supervisors are present here tonight. We have a forum. Do we have any public comments on any of the agenda items listed here tonight before we vote on them? All right, hearing none, we'll move into the Secretary's report and the issues of this last month's minutes.
None for me.
All right, we'll move into Treasury's report.
Fund balances for the month of July. General fund and investments, escrow and liability, July balance, $7,732,485.45. Highway aid fund, $1,409,639.47. Capital reserve fund, $2,692,928.46 for a total July balance of $11,835,053.38.
All right, we'll pause around. Monthly bills.
Bills, the general fund total, $464,210.15. Escrow fund total, excuse me, $2,710.19. State highway fund total, $5,070.67. Capital reserve fund, $6,131.47 for a total bills of $478,122.48. Mr. Chair, I move that we pay the bills.
I'll second that, I'll throw some favors to him if I've seen a aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, reports, Lafayette Fire Company, east side in July, they had a call for service in Lancaster Township. Lancaster Township Fire Department, west side in July, 46 calls in Lancaster Township and 46 calls here today. Okay, anyway, from the fire department, you're good?
None of the 46 calls were anything significant, so we did do two public outreach events this past month. One was for PSP, they had a sunny day camp, and we also assisted Lafayette with their Kedda camp for the kids, so other than that, it's a pretty normal month.
Thank you. Thanks. Recyclable report, July 2025, 18.86% of the trash was recycled. Safety committee minutes during 2025, and sir reports, printed copies of all reports are available at township office for a nominal fee, convenient, principal website. We'll now move into workshop boards, first up, planning and zoning, Mr. John Don.
Couple things on the agenda for the zoning hearing board. Under old business, we had a hearing last month for a property at 85 Spencer Avenue for some special exceptions and variances. The zoning hearing board, her testimony, closed testimony, but has delayed their opinion or their response until this coming meeting. So I don't think there's anything too unusual about that. We have two new incident cases for the zoning hearing board, new business, 15 Parkside Avenue, that's a variance for some lock coverage, and another variance for 1534 Quarry Lane, which is a variance for some setbacks, again, nothing too extreme there. So I think you'll see some more stuff coming on that in a few months, or the next coming month. As far as the day-to-day stuff, grass is continuing to keep us busy, it's improving, you know, later in the year it seems to get a little better, people are kind of getting in the groove of things and it's improved, but it's still time-consuming, a lot to follow up, and people are still not cutting their grass. Also in your packet this month are two proposed ordinances by staff or drafts, and I kind of got a summary here for you. The first one is basically a residential rental property ordinance. As you know, over the past two years, we'll say that there's been some significant problems we've had with some rental properties, failing to do what they need to do, maintenance and so forth, which caused significant problems to the point where we have to condemn units in some of the properties. This ordinance kind of works to identify those properties and hold the property owners accountable, so it gives us a little more bite to go after them to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to do. Nothing's, nothing crazy, it's the, it's the general maintenance that they should be doing and we shouldn't necessarily have to tell them to do, but apparently we do. So that's the first one. The second one is, we've kind of titled natural landscapes. Over the last, talking to Mr. Daniels, the last several years, we've had a number of properties that have asked for some relief to the ordinance, the current ordinance of six inches in height for all grasses. We don't really have any kind of an exception built into the current ordinance. I think this would be more appropriate to maybe add to or amend the ordinance as an exception to that. This will allow for people to grow out, it's commonly referred to as natural meadows, so it's native type species of grasses that are designed to grow in greater length, some of them may be 18 inches in height, but what we're doing with the ordinance is trying to control and set some parameters on what they can and can't do, so it doesn't look like they're just not knowing, not taking care of the property, that there's some things that they're going to make it look a little more friendly to the neighborhood, yet allow them to accomplish what they're looking for, which is environmental, some stormwater benefits and so forth. So we're asking if there's interest from the Board of Supervisors to move forward with that. If there is, for one or both, then we'll take the next appropriate steps based on your thoughts for that.
Yeah, no, I'm definitely, I've never been forward, given you guys a little bit more teeth with these new sets of those ordinances. I mean, one of the, it's not more like a rhetorical, it's more a rhetorical question, but I'm not sure, you know, since we implemented this new rental ordinance, you know, how, what has worked, what hasn't worked, and clearly what we're seeing here is, you know, we need a little bit more teeth in certain sections, which is great, because I'm sure it's been, what's the word I'm looking for, it's a phrase, trial and error, if you will, especially with this rental being so new in the township, but I'm glad to see that you guys are looking at other avenues and we're giving you more teeth, so absolutely it would be.
And we did look at several municipalities in the county, trying to compare the best we can, similar size, and others as well, and what we're proposing in draft is really similar to what the language other municipalities are using, so we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, we're trying to use what seems to be working for some other municipalities, put it into something that we feel is best for us, that we can move forward, but.
I mean, really, my only other question would be if there have been any rental properties that have been rowdy or have had, like, rowdy, people stayed over and.
This one, the draft does propose a clause where if there's people being disorderly, you know, causing a disturbance, that it would allow for some action to be taken against the property owner. We did have a property February-ish of this year that the police department was called numerous times in just a couple of weeks, the problem kind of took care of itself in that the folks moved out, or were kind of pushed out by the property owner, but in a case like that, I think this ordinance would be helpful, not only to the township, the residents, the police, I think it would be helpful to all of us to try and have some sort of action that we can take with them.
Cool. Any questions?
No, I do like the expansion for the more natural landscape, I think it'll be beneficial. There's a lot of big properties that could benefit from more native species, for sure.
We're finding a lot of people, smaller properties, Hamilton Park, there's a couple of folks that are trying to do something along that line, we don't want to keep them from doing it, I think there is benefit to it, there's some, I did some background, and there's some stormwater, you know, positive impacts on stormwater, there's some impacts to wildlife, insects, everything, so I think it's good, but I think as long as we can have a little bit of control and have some, you know, requirements to make it look nice, not just an overgrown property.
Right. We're really fortunate that we had a planning commission member bring up this issue, trying to find ways that we could be more permissive in encouraging this, and we have another planning commission member who happened to be working for a nonprofit that was drafting a model ordinance for this purpose, just coincidentally, and so a little perfect storm allowed us to, I mean, gave some resources for John to move a little quicker than we might normally be able to, but we're hoping to have a decent place by next spring, and then kind of shoot to have the rental, the rental ordinance maybe from the beginning of the year, but that's pretty ambitious.
It is.
And John's pretty modest, and I'll let you know that he's done a lot of legwork on this, I was really skeptical to do it, Tom had brought this to my attention a couple of times, and then John really came to the table, did a lot of research, met with some of the landlords in the township to get their buy-in, and I think what he's bringing forward is a real practical approach to making sure that folks are protected, landlords are protected, renters have a venue to make sure that they have their life safety issues managed effectively, and hopefully, and you know some of the problems we've had over the last 12 months, in getting some of the apartment complexes to drive those appliances, electric, heating, we're hoping that this helps us identify where those problem areas are before it gets to the point where we find ourselves in enforcement action. So hats off to John for all the hard work on this, and I think what we're going to have is going to be a real balanced approach.
Great. Thank you. All right, next up, township engineer, Mr. Bedweaver.
Not really much to add to the report. The construction activity is keeping me jumping, for sure, but all but one of the projects seems to be being prosecuted with vigor, if you will, so they're getting on it, and that's always a good thing to get these projects completed and get a sense of calm in the neighborhood again, so I'm very glad for the diligence of the contractors and engineers working well together, so that's all I've got.
Any questions? Thank you, Ben. Next up, Public Works, Mr. Devon Groh.
Oh, great, busy month, short report here for you, just a few things, the hidden one. We've had a little, we're still collecting data for the 741 Bridge, that should be opening here in the next week or two, from my understanding. I know they have, the plan was to be open before school started on the 25th, I think they're ahead of schedule by a couple of days, so I think we should see it open up, which will be great for travelers. Before you tonight, there's an extension, a one-year extension for a lease contract there for Action. We had our paving project completed this year, as you guys are aware, well aware, that went off fairly well, I think a lot of residents were happy, and they cooperated greatly, so I appreciate that, made everything easier, and then shortly after that, we were able to get the contractors in to do the lane shift project on River Road. I did say that's completed, it did lie a little bit, the crosswalks haven't been installed yet on Ridge and Center, so they will come back, it's a different crew, they'll come back and install those crosswalks, and then we'll, once they're installed, we'll look at where we want to place the delineators to try and help visually keep people out of that traveling. That's all I have for you tonight, unless you guys have any questions.
None for me, David. Up next, please, chief guys.
We need yours. For July of 2025, we have 480 calls for service, and you could see on your sheet down below, the figure of the year to date, the average per month thus far this year. 22 crashes in July, zero fatal crashes, the members issued 112 traffic citations, four traffic warnings that were written, 10 misdemeanor felony arrests, four DUI arrests, and 10 non-traffic citations, which are summary criminal offenses, and zero overdose incidents were fatalities. Just to give you a little update on, trying to improve the department as a whole, some training, some significant training that's occurred and upcoming, we had two members that were just trained in certified child seat installers, we plan on publishing certain hours a week, where a chance for them to sign up for an installation via our Crime Watch portal, so that's a little bit, some nice community outreach. We got some seats donated. We got some seats donated by an agency, I forget what agency it was. We now have a way the community can sign up to potentially qualify for a free child seat if they meet some requirements. We just had one of our members complete a week-long class last week on photography. We have kind of one member, our detective, that's well-qualified in forensic services type skills, I'll say. We're trying to get another member up to snuff, which we're trying, Officer Dimick, it'll help with processing crime scenes if we have more than one member that's qualified in that area. So he just completed a photography class for a week. We have Officer McDonald, in September is going to be attending a drug recognition expert course, it's a three-week course, where he'll be considered official DRE, which will help with DUI detection, not only for himself, but for the whole department. So he'll be then officially, if he finishes the class, he'll be considered a DRE, it's the classification. Just a little update on the Crime Watch Portal. The submitted tip has paid off well recently. We've gotten probably at least three to four tips to help solve and solve crimes over the last month. And recently, there was one that was also a submitted tip. We post our arrest warrants we have on Crime Watch Portal, someone called in and said, hey, they're right here, right now, come get them. So it was kind of nice. So the submitted tip part of the Crime Watch Portal's been good. There's a couple of things under New Business, three resolutions, which are basically prerequisites to have the ability to apply for these grants that you'll see a little bit later on under New Business. But that's all I have. You guys have any questions?
Nope.
None for me. Thank you. And next up, Township Manager, Mr. Martin.
I'd like to announce the passing of Sam Bigler. If you had any interactions with Sam, most of us in the room at one time or another have. Sam, sometimes when we interact with Sam, it would be fun, sometimes it was contentious, but it was always interesting. But I think it's worth noting at his passing, just the impact that he had, both in Lancaster Township and Lancaster County. Sam was an Olympian, represented this country, I think in sixty-eight, perhaps seventy-two. He was, what's that?
That sounds about right.
He was an instructor and a coach for many years at Thaddeus Stevens. He was a bit of a philanthropist, especially for charities serving veterans. And I think, John, did you attend his service?
I was not able to attend the service.
It was Tom Daniels went over to his service and said, you know, the line went around the building a time or two. And so I was glad for him and his family, that he got that kind of send-off, but it was also an opportunity for people to share all the different ways that Sam really contributed. So I just wanted to mention him and note that. Some other quick things, the paving project, as Devin mentioned, went really well this year. We got an unusual, I'm happy to say we got an unusual number of comments from residents, talking about how quickly it went, how we reached out and were informative, how the crews went through. Now, a lot of that paving itself is done by third-party vendors, but all the prep work, the reach that Devin and this crew does, the letting folks know, like, we're gonna be here on this date, the crew comes through and all the follow-up work. And then the little small complaints about, you know, driveway transitions, or et cetera, et cetera, was all handled in a way that must have made an impact for the number of residents who reached out to say thank you. So hats off to the Public Works Department. We continue to work with the police union, converting their individual labor agreements into a collective contract. The union has been really great to work with, that's in no small part to the chief serving kind of as an intermediary between the interests of both parties, so thanks to him, and thanks to the guys who really come to the table in a reasonable way. I think it demonstrates that the contract that we provided was generous but fair, and their approach has been in kind in terms of these sort of conversations. So I think what we'll eventually bring back to you in the next few months here, I think will serve all of us well for, hopefully for the next four years. Devin mentioned River Road, if you have a chance to get over there, I think we did a good job of finding a balance between, you know, cost and a practical solution. You do drive slower there, and there is a much wider road traveling for pedestrians and cyclists to be segregated from the flow of traffic. We have, as Devin mentioned, some crosswalks, some bollards to put up, but I think even at first blush, and, you know, anecdotally, as I drive through there, cars seem to be going slower and adjusting to new traffic patterns. And while I'm handing out kudos, I'll thank Ben Weber, in addition to all the construction projects that we have, and all the potential big projects, be it the prison, or a new school, or a new Public Works building that are coming on board that he has to do. I challenged him to wrap up a bunch of outstanding issues like Hawthorne Ridge, Hawthorne Gardens, which you've seen on your agendas for five, six, seven years now, and those are all coming to a close due to his hard work. So it seems like we're going through a bit of transition in the township as a whole, as we've changed staff, as we've changed supervisors, we're bringing some of these older issues to a close, and we're really able to start to work towards new projects moving forward. And that feels good, it feels good to, I mean, if I had to see Hawthorne Ridge on an agenda again, I'd pull my hair out. Anyway, that's all I got.
Awesome. Thank you. There was one, actually this is more of a zoning slash township issue, but Manor Shopping Center, the entrance coming in from Charles Road, I think that road might be sort of deteriorated a little bit again. Not sure if the owner of Manor Shopping Center has had any interest in trying to alleviate that problem again, because it looks like, I guess, that road looks like it's deteriorating again.
Since, if I remember correctly, private road, we can touch base with the gentleman, who's kind of our contact for the, he's not really the property manager, but he does a lot of work for them. We'll reach out to him, see what he has to say. I suspect they're not overly, couldn't be quick to jump at it, but we can certainly have a conversation with him.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. All right, with that being said, we'll move into announcements. Tuesday, August 12, 2025, at 6:30 is the Youth Aid Panel. What's today? Today's the 11th? Tomorrow? That's tomorrow, right here at 12:40 Maple Ave. Tuesday, August 19, 2025, the Planning Commission meeting is canceled. Tuesday, August 26, at 7:00 PM, is the zoning hearing board meeting here at 12:40 Maple Ave. Monday, September 1, is a holiday, Labor Day, the township office is closed. Monday, September 8, 2025, at 6:00 PM, is our September Board of Supervisors meeting here at 12:40 Maple Ave. Bless you. Tuesday, September 9, at 6:30 PM, is the next Youth Aid Panel meeting here at 12:40 Maple Ave. With that being said, we'll now move into old business.
Resolution 2025-10, resolution establishing scheduled fees for the Township of Lancaster, Lancaster County, Pennsylvania. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-10, establishing scheduled fees for the Township of Lancaster in Lancaster County, Pennsylvania.
I'll second that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, planning and zoning.
The demolition permit application for 901 East Orange Street. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a request from Charles Pinsky to alter a Class II historic resource at 901 East Orange Street. At their meeting on August 4, the Lancaster Historical Commission recommended approval of the subject demolition permit application as discussed and modified during their meeting.
I'll second that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we'll move on to new business.
Request for special fire police assistance for the East Petersburg Community Day on Saturday, September 20, 2025. Police services are required from 7:45 to 11:00 AM for the annual 5K run and community parade. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a request for special fire police for the annual East Petersburg Community Day on Saturday, September 20, 2025, from 7:45 to 11:00 AM.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Resolution 2025-11, resolution approving the use of Pennsylvania statewide local sheriff's assessment grant of $222,894.60 for the purchase of body worn cameras and mobile video recorders by the Lancaster Township Police Department. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-11 for the use of PA statewide local sheriff's assessment grant of $222,894.60 for the purchase of the body worn cameras and mobile video recorders.
Second that? All of those in...
I just want to, for the public's perspective, I want to make sure that we're clear here, and Chief, help me if I'm wrong, but this resolution and the next two resolutions that follow are required for the application, for the grant application itself. This is not approving the purchase of these items. The state wants to see, or the agency supplying the money, want to see that the local governing body is in support of the grant application, and if the grant is awarded, that the money's actually going to be spent. They get a lot of these applications, they want to prioritize money that's actually going to hit the ground. So they're asking for the resolutions in advance of the application, but it doesn't guarantee that we're going to get the money. So we provided the numbers, we provided the resolution. If we don't get the grant, we'll have to revisit the issue on how we fund those things, but if we get the grant, we're agreeing that, if we get the grant, we'll use it as best approach. Yeah, okay, sorry. It's a little different than we usually do things.
Understood. Thank you. There was, I'll second that motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Resolution 2025-12, a resolution approving the use of Pennsylvania statewide local sheriff's assessment grant of $50,144.8 for the purchase of handheld portable radios by Lancaster Township Police Department. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2025-12 for the use of Pennsylvania statewide local sheriff's assessment grant of $50,000, or excuse me, $50,144.8 for the purchase of handheld portable radios by the Lancaster Township Police Department.
I'll second that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Resolution 2025-13, a resolution approving the use of PA statewide local sheriff's assessment grant of $89,504.10 for the purchase of TASER electronic control devices and the conversion of Lancaster Township Police Department's shotguns to less lethal shotguns. Mr. Chair, I go with we approve Resolution 2025-13 for the use of PA statewide local sheriff's assessment grant of $89,504.10 for the purchase of TASER electronic control devices and the conversion of Lancaster Township Police Department's shotguns to less lethal shotguns.
I'll second that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 2025 Public Works one-year lease collection contract extension with LY Services Group LLC for $94,902.50. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 2025 Public Works one-year lease collection contract extension with LY Services Group LLC for $94,902.50.
I'll second that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Guest recognition and anticipation. Is there anyone out in the crowd tonight that would like to speak their mind?
Yes.
We ask you to...
Oh, yes. Right. We have moved to that.
Name and address, please.
My name's Nick Selch, 1048 Wheatland Avenue, and I was very pleased with the lines going down the river, too, and was hoping that we might be able to look at Wheatland Avenue. There was some discussion that maybe there might be something there. I really like the center line and the sidelines that make it as it is, like on Wilson, and I hope you'd consider that. I'd also brought up in the past, the building of the, replacing of the crosswalk at the bottom of Race Avenue, crossing over to Columbia, and those lines were erased when it was repaved and have not come back. And, yes.
Yeah, absolutely. So that is under agreement with the City of Lancaster, they owed us, so they have the equipment to do that, so that's under contract to be done here this fall.
Fantastic. Thank you. Those were the two very important items.
Thank you. Anybody else here tonight? Going once? Coming twice? We will recess for now, because we're gonna come back at 7 for a public hearing, as you see on the...
We can have an executive session in the interim.
And we will have an executive session in the interim.
Thank you.
So we'll be back at 7.
You guys don't miss that, you're not hearing.
No.[334.12]
A public hearing for the transfer of restaurant liquor license number R-1023 from the city of Lancaster into the township of Lancaster for El Cubano Restaurant LLC, 33 Rank Ave., Lancaster, PA 17602, action item.
So, turn the hearing over to Matt.
So, members of the board, as the chair has announced, and ladies and gentlemen, this is the day and time for which public notice has been given for a hearing on consideration of adoption of a resolution regarding the intermunicipal transfer of a liquor, restaurant liquor license. Public notice has been given. We have proofs of publication as well as the applicant's application and related documents. All are part of the record of this proceeding. And we have counsel present, and we are being recorded. So...
Renee, you want to come over here with me? There's nobody else here standing there?
Yep.
So, good evening. My name's Aaron Zeimer. I'm an attorney with RKG Law. Represent the applicant here this evening. I'll give you just some brief, very brief background. I don't know how frequently these intermunicipal license transfer applications come before the township. I deal with them somewhat regularly in my practice, so I tend to like, if I can, to provide a little bit of context for some boards that don't run into very often. But these hearings are required for two primary reasons. One, because we're moving a license from outside of the township into the township or seeking permission to do that. And two, because the township's over what the PLCB or the liquor code has defined as its quota for restaurant liquor licenses within the township, which is currently set at one for every 3,000 residents. I'll note that that number has not changed in some decades with the liquor code, as many things in the liquor code haven't changed for some decades. So that's what requires us to be here tonight. I'll note also, for the board's benefit, there's currently eight licenses within the confines of Lancaster Township, eight restaurant licenses, I should say. Of those eight, one is held by Wise Markets and one is held by Giant Foods. And the reason I note that is because what has become a bit unique in the restaurant licensing world is that those licenses have always been somewhat hard to find. Lancaster, we've been fortunate. There are generally some that come available with some degree of regularity for folks that are looking, but more and more, those licenses that are being acquired by Sheets and Wise and Giant and Wegmans and so on, those don't come back on the market. So, the pool of licenses, restaurant liquor licenses for folks that, like Renee, that want to operate an actual restaurant, that pool is ever shrinking. And what that has created is more and more need to move them around from one municipality to another, because when they become available, you must, you've got to buy where it's at. And in this particular case, it was in the city of Lancaster. And as you may have seen in our application, the license that we're seeking to move was formerly, or is held by Root, the restaurant that was there on, it was Walnut Street. It's now closed down. So, they put their license for sale, and it's under agreement by Renee to move there. So, with that being said, I think, do you want to swear, Mr. Diaz?
Please raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand.
Do you swear or firm testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Well...
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good. Mr. Diaz, can you introduce yourself to the board? What's your full name?
My full name is Renee Diaz Cabrera. I'm the owner of El Cubano Restaurant. Anything else?
Yeah, well, yep, I'll walk you through it. Are you the only owner, or who else was involved in the operation?
I got a 50%. My wife is over there. She got the 50% on the restaurant. And we are in operation since 2019, so sixth year of running the business.
And during that time, you've been at the 33 Rank Avenue address?
33 Rank Avenue.
Okay.
33 Rank Avenue, Lancaster, PA 17602.
Okay. And I mentioned to the board, but just to confirm, you signed an agreement, and there's an agreement in place for you to buy the restaurant liquor license from Root Restaurant and Bar, is that correct?
Well, Root Liquor, yeah, except the bar located in the west one, I guess, right?
Yeah, Walnut Street, yeah, yeah. So, I want to talk a little bit about your location on Rank Avenue. You leased that property, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And the board may be somewhat familiar, but can you describe briefly, like, what's around you and your restaurant on Rank Avenue? Are there other businesses? Is it residences? Is it a mix of both?
Well, mostly it's businesses around my restaurant. We can mention here the Outro Bands, that's right behind of the restaurant. We have across this tree and, yes, East King, Conestoga View is a building, a big building down there. We got plumbing service on Rank Avenue, right? And across this tree, a couple neighbor, a couple neighbor, not too much. And the other SN School, it's adult school of cosmetic and...
Cosmetology school?
Cosmetology.
Yeah, okay. I want to talk a little bit about your existing restaurant. I don't know if any of the board members have had the benefit of being there since you've been open, but can you describe generally, what type of restaurant are you?
We have a Cuban food down there. It's Spanish, but typically the Cuban food. And we are running, how I told you, since 2019. And the fair thing that I, that we are trying to add a liquor license permit down there, it's about my customer, because almost 80% of customers, they go to the restaurant, they ask for wine or beer. So, that is the goal that we have. Mostly for the customer, get more customer, get better service, because a minor percent of people prefer eat with beer or wine. I'm including.
Renee, I want to show you what I've marked as A1, I will call it applicant's exhibit one. And I'll say, this, something I printed from what I believe is your website. Can you, can you just briefly describe what this is?
The menu.
For your restaurant? Okay. If I can, I want to pop up the board with some copies here. I want to labor this part, but it's making part of the record.
We can mark that as applicant's form. Hold on a moment, Aaron.
Sure. Renee, does this, is this a current representation of the items that you offer at your restaurant at the moment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It looks accurate for what you guys currently have on the menu?
Well, the menu is changing. Sometime...
Sure.
We add more place, more dishes to the menu, but typically, that's the menu that we have down there.
Fair to say, I mean, pretty extensive menu. I saw things like pizza.
To be a small restaurant, I think that it's a large menu that we have down there.
Yeah, okay. And Renee, currently, without, you don't have a liquor license, what are your, what days a week are you open for business, and what hours on those days?
We are open seven days during week, starting at 10:00 a.m. and closing at 8:00 p.m. If we get liquor licenses, we are planning stand maybe a couple hours or hour and a half in the, in the business.
So, to be clear, if the license is transferred to your property, you have thought about increasing the hours to about 10:00 p.m.?
That's the, that would be, 10:00 p.m. will be the more, the more time that we will be open.
Right. You don't have any plans to be open past 10:00 p.m. regardless?
No.
Okay, okay. Do you have any employees?
Yeah, we have employees.
Approximately how many do you have?
About six employees.
Okay. And currently, about how many seats do you have available for customers?
Around 81 seats.
81 seats?
81 seats.
Are some of those outside?
Well, we are outside patio. We have a big patio outside, and we have it inside the, the dining room inside the restaurant.
And is that, the outside seating is included in that 81?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Renee, are you familiar with the requirements in the liquor code for what's called RAMP, Responsible Alcohol Management Program? Do you recall we discussed that?
Well, we are heard about that, and we are 100% agree with take a training, because that, this will be something new for us. I understand that with alcohol here in Pennsylvania, it's different, it's different. The manager or the owner have to learn about how they have to serve the liquor, who can, who can get the liquor. They have to be more than 21 years old and never serve liquor. For example, people drunk, people got problem in the restaurant. But beside that, we would like to get the training about that, from the liquor control board.
Right, yeah, correct. As part of the, if the license is approved for transfer there, do you plan to do any significant renovations to the property?
No, not at all.
Do you, is there currently a bar in the restaurant at all?
No bar.
And you don't have any plans to add one?
No.
So, any alcohol service would just be at the tables that you currently have there for customers?
Table with the dinner and take out as a sip part. That's the plan.
For sales to go?
So, to go, to go.
And you currently have, do you currently have parking on site for the restaurant?
We have parking. We have more than 10 space.
Okay. And as part of, as part of adding the license, you're not planning to add any seats or any additional seating inside or outside at the restaurant?
No, it will be the same.
Okay. All right. Let me see. During your time since 2019 that you've been open there, have you had, or do you recall having any police incidents at the restaurant, where the police have had to respond to a complaint or a call at the restaurant?
Never.
Have you had any issues with neighbors making complaints about noise or concerns at the restaurant?
Never, never.
Do you have any, do you currently offer any live music or any sort of entertainment at the restaurant?
The music in the restaurant will, is and will be like a background, that's it. Background music.
Played through a speaker or something on site?
Something like that.
Yeah, understood. So, no plans to add bands or live music or anything as part of your operations?
No.
Good, okay. That's all the questions I have at the moment. The board has any questions?
Aaron, what are the liquor control board requirements for operating in an outside venue? Aren't there, aren't there certain restrictions, including sound levels?
Yes, there are. So, the liquor code has its own, for lack of a better term, sort of noise restrictions in it. What the current regulations provide is that noise cannot be heard, and they've recently changed it. There's now a couple different options, but I believe it's at 75 decibels beyond the property line. If it's louder than that, then you are subject to a citation against your license by the liquor control, well, liquor control enforcement for that. So, they do have their own built-in noise, you know, restrictions or noise code. And that doesn't necessarily just apply to outside dining or entertainment. Theoretically, if it's too loud inside and you can hear it outside, that would still apply. Some municipalities cannot doubt of that, but to my knowledge, Lancaster Township hasn't.
Sir, are you currently operating with background music being played in the outside seating area?
Yeah, very low.
Okay. So, that's not going to change whether you're a licensed establishment or not?
No, no, no.
And is the Conestoga in the only other licensed establishment on the eastern portion of the township?
It's at the restaurant, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's located, yeah, I mean, right before the bridge.
Right before the bridge in Bridgeport, yeah. That's all I have.
Okay.
Any questions, gentlemen? I have none.
Okay. Just a very, very brief comment under the circumstances, but I'll just note for the board's benefit, in the liquor code, for these types of applications and these hearings, what it provides is that, it says that the receiving municipality shall approve the transfer of the license unless it finds that the transfer of the license would be adverse to the welfare, health, peace and morals of the community or its residents. And I think, under the circumstances, you know, I tend to say in these situations, these are really what liquor licenses are for. Restaurant licenses, certainly. You know, I know they've kind of been used in a lot of different situations. I mentioned grocery stores and convenience stores lately, but this is really what they were created for. And these are the folks that hopefully can thrive by using them. I think you don't have to be in the business to understand that margins are tight. have to be in the business to understand that margins are tight in the restaurant world, alcohol is often the place that gives restaurant owners and operators some relief as it relates to margins and profitability, and as Renee said, it's a, more and more, it's a thing now that when we pick and choose where we want to go out to dinner, you know, we look for that as consumers, we want to be able to go to a place, have dinner and have a drink with that, and I think, you know, approving the license for operation here certainly won't be adverse to the community in this area, and I think it would be nothing but beneficial for both Renee and an operation of the restaurant, but also for the township as well, and offer another, they're already there, but another offering for an existing establishment within the community, so. With that, we'd ask that the board approve the resolution that we've provided, and grant the intermunicipal transfer.
Members of the board, you have before you a resolution 2025-09, it is under consideration for adoption, you're not required to do it this evening, but if the board pays up a mind to adopt it this evening, you're certainly within the confines of the proper procedure to do so.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve resolution 2025-09, approving the intermunicipal transfer of Pennsylvania restaurant liquor license, number R-1023, from the city of Lancaster into Lancaster Township for El Cubano Restaurant LLC, a restaurant located at 33 Rank Avenue in Lancaster Township, Lancaster, Pennsylvania, 17602.
I will second that motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Done.
Wonderful. Thank you.
With that being said, I will now adjourn.